Share the agenda.
Okay. If you'd be kind enough to call the roll.
Yes, I will. Dale Livingston.
Here.
Tim Nass.
Here.
Dick DeKloa. Not here. Joe Cower. Not here. Larry Lennon.
Here.
Justine Semeroli.
Here.
And Mike Tomer.
Here.
Okay, welcome all. Thank you for for being here. Let's see, minutes from February twenty fourth, twenty twenty meeting. I take a motion to approve, motion and second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Many comments? Okay. Got a motion to approve the minutes, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay. Minutes approved. Take a motion to approve the minutes from the April twenty seventh meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Mike?
Second. Yep, second.
Tim? Okay. Any comments, questions? All in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, there was no meeting in March, so. That's that being done. I've got a couple of comments here and and we'll we'll get started. Of course, the business this evening is to to present the remaining planning issues and discuss them. The issues were identified as a result of review of the Bridgeville Comprehensive Plan. The Plan Commission started its review in late two thousand nineteen of the started the review of the in late two thousand nineteen of the Comprehensive Plan. After reviewing the plan, the commission identified some issues which we deemed may need, may still need some attention. On February twenty fourth, the Planning Commission meeting, we compiled some of those issues from the plan review. As a result of the compilation, it is our intent to use these issues as a starting point for discussion and potential planning issues of the future. Kind of create a to do plan, to do list, if you if you will. Members of the Planning Commission have over the last few months taken have taken issues and conceptualize them for the person purposes of tonight's discussion. Our discussions this evening are focused on potential scope and potential solution of these concepts. Over the course of the next few meetings, the commission will discuss and fine tune the concepts and prioritize them for planning purposes. We will present and discuss each concept one at a time. This may hope that the Planning Commission, we can review the remaining concepts this evening. If not, we will continue to review, concept review at our next meeting. Let me emphasize, this is a very initial discussion, kind of a brainstorming, if you will, of these concepts for long term planning. The Planning Commission. The planning discussion regarding the concepts will be ongoing as it will take many more discussions to get through this planning process and to take any kind of action. The meeting tonight will be kept to sixty minutes. We will have a public comment period for the last ten minutes of the meeting. Okay. Tim? Anybody else on the Planning Commission have any comments to to make before we get started?
Nothing here, Dale.
Nothing here.
Nope.
Okay. Larry?
No, I just assume that we're going to get an updated set once we're all through this.
Yeah, I you know, I I think we should, you know, sit down and and take some of the comments that we've heard and and, you know, put them back together and and go from there. So, um, tonight, uh, the first first one is parking issues. I spent a little time talking with the the Parking Authority. I I spent an hour or so visiting with Joe down there and and talking about issues and that type of thing. Some of the challenges, you know, some of the some of the parking issue complaints that I've heard at some of the at the council meetings and stuff. You know, it it's hard to say that we have a parking problem. I think there's some challenges in the borough. Some of the issues that that we've run into that have been identified are, you know, consumers or or employees parking in front of of residential areas. And then walking into the business district and leaving, taking away parking from the residences. You know, it's it's maybe more of a zoning enforcement issue from from the sounds of things. You know, from the discussions that I had with with the Parking Authority, you know, some of the issues that they were facing is people parking parking down on Chest Street and that type of thing and and hopping a bus or or something like that and taking away parking from in front of residences. And when people came home, they had kind of challenges to find a place to park, so. To kind of fully identify the parking issues and challenges in the borough. I I suggested perform maybe a parking, a needs assessment, community survey regarding parking in the in the multiple use district. Reviewing, maybe the the Planning Commission could review the zoning ordinances regarding the parking requirements in Bridgeville Borough.
Dale, Cheryl, can you hit the play button so we get a full screen on that slide?
Cheryl?
You have to enable edit, I think, and then hit, no, get just hit enable editing up at the top. And then down at the bottom right. Next to the left of the slider.
My computer's just being slow, hang on.
Okay, alright.
It's just not.
Not that, you want to hit the play button to the left of that.
To your left.
Right, right. There, that one, there you go.
There we go.
Yeah.
Great, there it is, thank you.
Okay, so, um, Plan Commission to take and review zoning ordinances regarding the parking requirements in Bridgeville for potential articles or sections to be updated. You know, one other possible solution is is involving having a workshop involving planning, Parking Authority, Planning Commission, Zoning Commission, Borough Council and Zoning Officer and just kind of look at and and see what sort of things we can do to to address some of the challenges. The other one is is kind of a a shot in the dark. I I used to live in a college town and we had issues with college students parking in the residential area. Like what we've got going on in some of the fringe business districts here. And what they did was they created like a two hour parking from from eight to four or something and then, you know, permit only from four oh one to, you know, eight o'clock, eight AM the next morning. And I, you know, that creates its own set of issues, but that's just another possibility for for a solution. Solution partners, the Bridgeville Parking Authority, Borough Manager, Zoning Officer, Borough Council, Planning Commission, community members. Possible funding is really going to be relatively inexpensive. And value is is, you know, just going to create the create, you know, better value within the community, so. Commissioners, comments, feedback? Suggestions?
Yeah, a couple of questions, Dale. I'm I'm wondering from your from your sit down with the Parking Authority that you referenced. Was there sentiment that, yep, there's issues that need to be addressed? Or did you kind of have to go searching for issues? How big of a problem is it? I know we've had people come to Planning Commission over the last two years, very specific people with you know, lived in certain areas and were tired of of parking away from home and walking, but how pervasive is the issue or is this a solution in search of a problem or is there a problem here?
Well, Parking Authority doesn't deem that there's a problem. You know, they've got a plan to to expand, you know, the parking lot down there by Berg's in the future. But, you know, the what they're, you know, what they're suggesting is is they've got a couple of people down on Hickman Street that are beyond the beyond the the paid parking and people go down there and park. And then they get out and go to Berg's or or go to or the bars or something for a couple hours and and, you know, homeowners come back and and you know, it's kind of the fringe areas. You know, and and the the issue up at the north end. St. Clair Street, you know, where the where been the true two, you know, kind of trouble spots that have been talked about.
Dale, was there an ordinance that created the parking meters on the residential streets? Separate and apart from zoning?
I I don't know. That's a good question, Larry.
Well, I assume there had to be.
You know.
Make them enforceable.
I mean, basically, you know, those were places that were meters, were metered to begin with. And they just took the meters down and and, you know, it's it's their pay system now.
Yeah, when you say metered to begin with, I'm not sure where begin with started with you. I don't, there was a lot of years where there was nothing there. And I've often wondered if that hasn't created the situation with the residents that own the homes on those streets. And I think one thing we might want to add here is if there is in fact an ordinance, again, I assume there is, if you add that to the list. I don't know that it would be covered under a zoning ordinance.
Yeah, you know, it seems to me that that where the meters are are in the the business, the the zone business district.
I mean, Dale, there are, I mean, there, speaking to where there were meters, like on Murray Avenue, I mean, there were parking meters there and it is still considered off street parking. And that was one of the that was one of the hotspots where you mentioned, you know, people coming into Pittsburgh parking or coming into Bridgeville parking and taking the bus into town. And that's why there was metered parking there, to kind of discourage the long term parking. And now it's and now it's just the you have the kiosks now.
Yeah. So to answer your question, Tim, I'm not sure, you know. The, you know, the some of the some of the issues, you know, at least from the Parking Authority's perspective. You know, that it's it's a it's a zoning issue in the fringe areas that that's, you know, not being enforced.
I'd be curious too, from the council members on the call, Joe and Bill and others. Is this something that comes up routinely or very incrementally?
This is, this is Bill. It comes up routinely. I mean, you you have, you you mentioned some of the hotspots, St. Clair Street, Baldwin Street, Hickman Street, and and the issues are what Mike said. You had people that were that would park there and jump on a bus and go into town and, you know, the parking spots were taken, so. You know, we 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 were trying to establish something on St. Clair Street that if because of the businesses down there and and migrating up further up the street. The the trouble was building an ordinance where you didn't punish the residents as well and giving them the opportunity to park. So, you know, we were we were knee deep into looking at permitting that area and and, you know, do you give two vehicles or three vehicles? It's more complicated than than it just sounds like, hey, let's let's make it a permitted area, so. But to answer your question, yes, it's routine. We we hear the complaints a lot.
So there is a there is an ordinance that specifically addresses that type of parking?
In in certain areas, Larry, it's not all over, like there isn't.
No, I understand, but there is an ordinance, I guess, is the point that I and and I like this issue generally, and I just think that to fill it out. We ought to add whatever that ordinance or ordinances are to this list of things to look at, so. You know, we can, if we're going to have this workshop, we can pick it around and come up with some ideas and and see if we can come up with some kind of a consensus to address it.
Yeah, we we would welcome that.
And and looking through the through the zoning ordinance, I mean, parking's not just in one place, it's in three, two or three places, so it's gonna, you know. We'll have to try and look at and address those issues too, and it is, you know, it it may be one of those things that, you know. It's just a matter of sitting down, getting everybody at the table and and, you know, just figuring out, is there an issue, isn't there an issue and and what are the challenges, if there are any?
I have a question.
Sure.
Do we have any idea what what occupancy, business occupancy there is in Bridgeville in the available storefronts?
Are you asking how many employees? I'm not sure I understand.
No, I just would like to know, are all the businesses, business places on Washington Avenue occupied? Or is there still some vacant? In other words, I'm trying to figure out is in Bridgeville in its heyday, was there always a parking problem? Or is there, since there are so many vacant storefronts now, has it decreased? And is it a lesser problem than it was before? Or does it make any difference?
Well, I don't think there's a lot of, I don't think there's too many vacant storefronts, or I mean, the most of them, we have a pretty low you know, non vacancy in our town. I think that when you say heyday, you know, we don't have retail stores as we did back in the, you know, back in the day. You know, most of our businesses are either, you know, restaurants and, you know, a lot of professional buildings and stuff like that, you know, but, uh, you know, you're not getting the foot traffic where the people are, you know, people are coming in. And I think that's one of the issues where the parking becomes an issue is people are coming in for very short periods of time and, you know, they might be coming in for an hour or half hour. And, you know, the parking becomes becomes an issue.
Yeah, it's been a topic of discussion for decades, and I know there's a pretty strong feeling, you know, in a lot of quarters in the borough. You know, that the reason that we don't have a more successful central business district is inadequate parking. I'm taking aside one way or another, but, you know, I've heard that discussion over the years and I think there's an element of sensibility to that, so. And I think, you know, I still think this is a key issue. It just keeps coming up year after year after year, so.
Has anybody thought of a park and ride for mass transit for the PAP buses?
Yeah, they've got them here and there in Ryan. There's none, I don't know where you would put one in Bridgeville.
There used to be one over at Star City. I don't know if it's still there or not.
Okay.
I mean, is there a potential for a Baldwin Street park and ride if that ever comes to fruition? Down the road?
I don't know. That's a good question.
The the buses used to go down Baldwin Street all the time, at least when I was growing, a million years ago. They used to go down Baldwin Street and then jog to the left and go get on Bauer Hill from there. So, at least on that bus route. But I don't know, is that not the people causing the problem, the parking problems for St. Clair Street?
Well, what, St. Clair Street wouldn't be, well, that's the one on Baldwin Baldwin, that's the the forty one that goes to Pittsburgh that way, and then the one that goes like would be with the thirty three and one.
Okay.
Well, I I don't want to get bogged down in a lot of discussion at this point in time. I mean, it's obviously something that, you know, we're either going to keep it on the list or not keep it on the list or, you know, move it up or down, but I mean, it's it's, there's obviously enough food for thought here, so. Unless anybody's got any serious objections, then I'm going to move on.
No, no serious objections, though, just a last quick hit question. Do we have any experience in permitted parking within the borough over the past? Is that something that we've administered ever? Because I'm with you, costs feel very nominal here. It's legislation, it feels like zoning for the most part, but if you get into permitted parking, some percentage of overhead comes into managing that stuff and renewals and fees and whatever.
Yeah, Tim, this is Bill. Yeah, that we used to have permits, and and so employees of certain businesses could buy a monthly permit and park in, say, Lot Two or Lot Four.
Okay, so something we've got some experience in.
Yeah, years ago, but it was done.
Okay. Anything else, Tim?
Nope.
Okay. I'm going to move on to enhance small town charm while investing in the business district. Again, I I didn't, you know, with with the pandemic, it was hard to get out and talk with people, but just kind of some thoughts that that Joe Joe Cower initially brought up, you know. Whoopsie. You know, the the gateway and directional, community directional signage, you know, that's in the process. It's just pending funding. You know, work with Allegheny County's surrounding communities to create a regional traffic improvement plan to better address development in the surrounding communities. Adjust, that would address some of the issues for for the traffic load coming through town. You know, create a revitalization plan for the business district. I know that there was talk about trying to do something like that in the Comprehensive Plan. I'm not sure where that ended up. You know, Joe suggested maybe adding street amenities, benches, that type of thing. As far as a solution to to, you know, dressing up the town, convene a borough task force. Business owners, residents, borough officials to address and identify challenges in the business district. Involve Washington Avenue businesses, property owners and long term planning. Encourage economic development of vacant properties, buildings to utilize and underutilized properties along the Washington Avenue corridor. Marketing downtown as a as a business district, as livable, walkable. And again, maybe review the the zoning and the mixed business, mixed use business, determine if there's anything that can be done to encourage business development. Possible solution partner, funding partners, Southwest Community Chamber of Commerce, PA State Association of Burrows, PA Department of Community Economic Development, Char West Cog, Allegheny, Bridgeville Parking Authority. You know, potential dollars is is, you know, small to medium, anticipated value of the community could be large, is how I rate it. Feedback?
Yeah, just one quick point. It's my understanding the borough had a some sort of downtown business district committee comprised of business owners or property owners that was working with the county for facade upgrades. Some, and it's not too many years ago, and the reason I know about it is I sat on a similar committee in Coriopolis. And we would hear a lot about Bridgeville from the county partners we were working with there. I can tell you in Coriopolis, if you've been through there lately, it's been quite successful. Of course, the reason it's successful there is there was one guy with some money bought up most of the businesses and put his own money into it as opposed to using grants, but I guess the point I'm making is I think some piece of this has already been completed. And I'm just wondering if anybody's got any of the notes or records of that.
I I don't know, you know, that'd be a question for Lori.
Yeah, she would have been involved.
It was a question that I asked early on and and didn't get much of a response, but I know, you know, she's been out, she's
Yeah, we have a friend that owns a business, custom, Shorty's Custom Cremations, and I know at one point she was involved trying to get money from them for a facade upgrade. I'm not sure how that played out at the end of the day. I really kind of lost touch with that, but I do know that she was involved in that program here. She wasn't on the committee. She was trying to make use of the grant funds that they were trying to make available.
Yeah, Larry, I know back probably six, seven years ago, we had a grant working with it was a group in Allegheny County, but it wasn't with it wasn't with like the businesses. It was, it was like a it it was a free grant, I guess, and they came and worked with small towns. They did a lot with Beaver. And, you know, so we looked at a lot, a lot of stuff that they did with Beaver and it was about, you know, how do you you know, how do you promote your businesses, you know, it was, it was a lot of it was standard stuff, you know, retail on the first floor, keep your professional offices on the second floor. But I I can, their money ran out, so they didn't, they stopped working with us.
I think that's the same group.
Yeah.
So did they produce, Mike, did they produce a document at the end of the day, or was it just a lot of notes and some facade renovations?
I don't know if you want more history on this, but I've I was on, I remember it. If you want it, just let me know.
Sure, go ahead, Pat.
Uh, it was Allegheny Together. It was a program Mary Wise was spearheaded it while she was on council. As Mike indicated, it was a a grant that was from the Allegheny County Department of Economic Development. It was a partnership that was with Allegheny Together. They came in and they worked on trying to bring forth, you know, some improvements to the business district. There were facade grants, a number of business owners applied, Churchill's Custom Pet, Churchill Churchill's Cremation, Siraznik's, a number of businesses applied, some of them got them. And as Mike Tomer indicated, the the partnership, you know, ran out of funding and that was sort of the end of it. So, that's the
So, I think the Allegheny Together rings a bell, so there were no documents produced that would serve as a springboard for this discussion?
There were some, all right, there were some good pieces there. I don't remember anything that really pulled together. I could be wrong on that. I I it was also at the time that they were doing the the planters and the sidewalks. I believe that was right, Allegheny Together was right around the same time. As far as a redevelopment. The two different and separate issues, but they were at the same time. Oh, you know what, let me look while you guys keep going.
Yeah, if you have documents, Pat, that would be helpful.
Then somebody remind me the total price tag and all the signage work, the design stuff that was done a couple of years ago. I I have two hundred something in my head, but I don't know if that's grounded in reality or not.
Are you talking about the KLA that we did?
Yeah.
The first piece of it was, you know, was just a design and the drawings.
Yep.
I think we spent, if anybody remembers correctly, I think it was around twenty twenty thousand, somewhere around there. But to move forward, the next, the next step would be to get the actual engineering drawings and then have it set out the bid to to see what it would cost to actually have the signs made. You know, and you would do it and it would be done in phases, like you would do your main, you know, your entryway, coming to town first, like those two big ones. And then like your signage along your main streets, and then as 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 you replace signs along your, you know, other streets going up, say, Bank Street and down Bauer Hill, and then you start on the side streets after that.
So we never got the estimate on the actual cost to implement?
To do the whole town?
Yeah.
You're talking, you're probably talking a couple hundred thousand dollars to go the whole town. But like I said, you would do it in phases. It would be done over years.
Yeah, I mean, this this one, signage aside, this one kind of lends itself towards stacking priorities and chunking them off, you know, as time and budgets allow.
Excuse me? I know Lori had told me it would take about, they, the cost was about two hundred fifty thousand to do the signage through the borough. I know, um, Lori had told me it would take a, uh, they, the cost was about two hundred fifty thousand to do the signage through the borough.
Okay.
And that was several years ago, so I'm not sure what the price will be today, but that was what it was before.
Okay.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
So if you bite this whole thing off, Dale, you could very easily be in the three dollar signs, I know it's a pretty subjective. Rough order of magnitude that we're using here, but again, you wouldn't have to do all or nothing on this one.
Right, and that's, that's one of those things, this is one of those projects, it was, it's gonna be, it would go on the, on the plan. And it would be a, a three-year or five-year plan or, or, you know. Something like that could be done in chunks.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on. Pedestrian and safety issues in the borough.
Hey Dale, sorry, if I could just interject really quickly, just a reminder that. You know, we're capturing scores in the backend of these, so as things are fresh in the mind, if people got a scratch pad and, and grab thoughts, so that we're not trying to retro. Think about, you know, what, what value we were attaching to these things.
Good point. Um, pedestrian safety issues, again, uh, we're getting back to that, that making um. Bridgeville more pedestrian friendly, um, it can be a challenging time wa- walking through, navigating through Bridgeville. Um, especially doing, due to increased traffic volume, um, poorly maintained sidewalks. Um, crosswalks and poor location sightlines, um, some of the things that, that, you know, are tangential to this is, you know. Um, pedestrian safe crossing, um, safe access to community parks like McLaughlin. Um, in Chartiers Park, you know, they're not really walkable, um. Moving, uh, improving uh crosswalks, um, uh, reducing sightlines, um, making them more visible. Um, to the drivers, um, improving signage, um, is another one, so, um, solution. Um, reviewing the location and, and uh, crosswalk marking signage at intersections with poor sightlines. Um, you know, intersections of particular interest or Bauer Hill Railroad Street. Um, Dewey Avenue, Dewey and Bank Streets, um. Potential solutions, um. You know, increasing signage with some of the new high visibility sign, um, for, for existing crosswalks. Better or different um roadway markings to assist drivers to recognize um crosswalks. Um, create a sidewalk maintenance program to identify sidewalks that, that are in need of repair and, and high pedestrian traffic areas. Um, and, and uh move, uh, make a plan to move. Out into the neighborhoods, um, some of this is a zoning enforcement work, um, and some of us working with, um, you know, property owners. Um, to, to correct the issue. Um, and maybe some of we can get some, um, neighborhood beautiful, great beautification grants or something along those lines to help out with sidewalk repair. Um, solution partners, Bridgeville Public Safety Committee, Penn dot Allegheny County. Um, there's probably some others out there, there's probably some other granting, um, agencies out there. Again, um, it's gonna add value to the community, um, and, and probably could be done without a whole lot of dollars. Comments, feedback?
Oh, I got one, Dale.
Okay.
Um, you know, like, you know, we, we talked about all these different projects and, you know, and they're all. If you think about it, they're all combined, I mean, they're all connected in some way or the other. You know, the last time, you know, the last part, we talked about beautification and we talked about signage, you know, part of the signage package was Wayfair, you know. Uh, signs, you know, this way to the library, this way to here, which would tie right into, you know, your pedestrians. For walkways with this one, um, just like parking would tie into, you know, your signage for parking, so. Um, you know, when we put, we put these dollar signs on, uh, on these, of these projects. Well, it might be three dollar signs for one of them, but maybe half of that dollar sign goes to another project, another half goes to another project, so. Um, I think this is really important, this is a, a, a very important. Um, piece of, that we could work on, and I don't think it is expensive, but it's just a matter of identifying. You know, where are the, where do people walk, you know, you know, it would, it would, you would take some surveying, going up to your help. And going to different parts of Bridgeville, to the people who do walk and say, where, when you walk, which, which the routes you would take and. If you could walk a certain way, where would you like to see, you know, improvements?
Mm-hmm. Well, and, you know, I, I, having done a little bit of traveling here recently and, and visiting some different communities. You know, it's amazing to me that, that what some communities have done, rather than just the two standard white lines for crosswalks. They've actually done some sort of a, a crosshatch pattern in the crosswalk, so it really draws drivers' attention. That, hey, there's a crosswalk here, and you know, with the high vis, just this high vis, I'm not talking about a lighted sign or anything like that. It's just the, 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 the high vis green sign with the black lettering and that type of thing helps make those things stand out. And it just makes it a little bit safer.
I agree.
It's just a thought, you know, that's, uh.
We, we have had some areas that have been, you know, brought to our attention that are, you know, really close to where, you know, the borough building. Where, you know, if you go right up at the intersection of Washington Pike and Bauer Hill Road, uh, lanes up there, that's a very difficult place to cross. If you're gonna go to the other side, and then obviously down by the Dairy Light. Um, you know, we've had, you know, many people complain about that, and, and, you know, in the summertime, you think about the Dairy Light. You know, where do people park, they try to go over there and give a lot of foot traffic that walks there, um, so there are issues where. Something where a high vis walkway, like you walk, a crosswalk would be beneficial, and it probably wouldn't be that much money.
Right. Well, and, you know, I mean, this is, this, the, the pedestrian safety was, was one of the things in the, in the co- comprehensive plan. Is it still an issue in Bridgeville? Does the Planning Commission feel it's still of an issue in Bridgeville?
I do. I, I think, I think uh pedestrian traffic is extremely important in Bridgeville.
I do, I see issues every day, especially when kids are in school.
Or out of.
Hey Dale, just a question, so I'm, I'm thinking about the places that I walk, right, and one of the, one of the things that pops to mind is like that alley between Sartier's. Street and the uh, the Berg's parking lot, where like the road is just caving into the railroad line, like. Are those, are there ap- operational budget dollars set aside to address that as just part of borough maintenance? Or does all that require capital investment of some sort?
Mike?
Uh, you, are you talking about Warner Avenue?
I don't know the name of it.
Yeah, I think it is.
Just right over the, right over the, the two-lane bridge there, if you make the right and take the back way into Berg's.
Actually, on the list that gets fixed uh this year.
Okay, cause I, I just, I've noticed more orange cones being thrown into holes that have been there for some time, and it doesn't seem a sustainable approach. I don't know how much of this we would look to pick up as a capital project as opposed to.
That's on the list this year to be, if, if anybody, uh, any of you council guys want to chime in, but I, I'm pretty sure it's still. Um, I talked to Lori last week and, um, when we started doing all the grants for all the flooding projects. That was one of the things that we had on our list to get taken care of, um, it didn't get funding through the grants. But, um, I believe Borough is moving forward to get taken care of, uh, regardless.
Okay.
That is, that is correct, Mike, and if I remember correctly, we had to apply for some permit or something. Okay. That's, that's what the delay was.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I would look at this then Dale as true improvements as opposed to any kind of maintenance of deteriorating conditions.
Warner Avenue you're talking about?
Well, that, uh, there's someplace up on Washington Pike, if I'm not mistaken, and it's just got an orange cone thrown into a crumbling sidewalk somewhere.
Okay, I, I, I'm still on pedestrian issues here.
Agree, I bet pedestrian, as much as I'm walking a sidewalk and there's a cone in the hole.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm with you.
I just, I'm trying to tease out how much that's gonna be taken care of, and we don't need to set aside and ask for funding for it as opposed to. Stuff that we say, it's just on the sidelines until we approve it some other way.
Yeah. Well, and I, I think, you know, uh, in further discussions as we, as we, you know, comb some of this stuff out, that, you know. Some of these issues will, will find their, find their home as, you know, pedestrian issue or, or zoning or maintenance or that type of thing, so.
Real, real quick, Dale, real quick, um, when you talk about, you know, accessibility for pedestrians. And, you know, how do we make it better, are you talking primarily on crosswalks? And connect connectivity, or like when Tim's talking about, when he's walking and he sees a, you know, a part of the sidewalk, it's. That needs, is in disrepair and needs fixed.
Cause it's, it's sidewalks and crosswalks, it's sidewalks through the neighborhoods and on main, main.
Because then you, then you're, you know, playing devil's advocate, sidewalks of ability of the homeowner and the residents. So now it becomes a matter of how, how much are we enforce that? Um, you know, to take care, you know, do we tell the owner, hey, you gotta take care of this because, you know, we're bringing the town and fix your sidewalks.
Well, it's, you know, it's a matter of coming up with a plan for doing some of that stuff.
Exactly.
You know, and, you know, anything that we can do to help the Borough Council along with, with some of this stuff and, you know. Put together to-do lists for, for, you know, some, you know, pedestrian stuff, pedestrian issues, and, you know.
Yep.
We're further along, they're further along in the borough, in, in its entirety is further along.
Yep. Again, by everything being connected, now you have a zoning issue, which we talked about zoning the last time and zoning enforcement.
Yeah.
Those stuff like that would fix this, fix problem, yeah.
Oh, okay, any other comments? Okay, moving along, um, Joe put together, Joe Cower put together the um traffic mitigation and improvements along. Fit uh Highway fifty, Route fifty, um, the north end. Um, you know, we, we kind of talked about this earlier in one of the, I think it was a February meeting. But, um, you know, the challenge is to change, you know, heavy traffic coming into Bridgeville. Have a, a bladed corridor, unwelcoming gateway to the community, um. You know, tangential or related areas that should be considered for full solution. Um, create a specific revitalization, multi municipal traffic improvement plan to improve traffic flow into Bridgeville from Collier Township. Um, project area starting uh in Collier Township at Mayor Street. Um, to at least Bauer Hill Road in Bridgeville suggested. Possible four lanes or traffic, two in each direction into, to Bauer Hill with dedicated turn lanes into Presley Road and Bauer Hill Road. Um, suggested concept of extending the existing railroad trestle, existing bridge over Sharkiers Creek would also consider. Be considered to make room for additional travel lanes, need work, need to work with Collier Township as. Multiple exits from the shopping center are also a major source of the problem. Um, when roadway is being constructed, improve the aesthetics of the north gateway with new sidewalks, ornamental lighting. New welcoming way, uh, wayfinding signage, blah, blah, blah. Um, essentially continuing downtown streetscape into, to the Collier border. Um, to capitalize on the infrastructure investment, consider rezoning Washington Avenue from Collier border. To Bauer Hill Road to not permit car sales lot or repair facilities. Zone properties for either commercial activities, um, consistent with Kerwin Heights or, or downtown. Or either highly densely, high or, or either high density residential mixed. To encourage more of a downtown feel throughout. Potential solution, improve gateway with additional travel lanes to facilitate travel, traffic to primary side streets. Um, of both Bauer Hill Road and Presley, better utilize, better usage of commercial properties along to the. Local tax base and move and more welcoming gateway to the community, improving property values, perception, marketability of the borough. Um, as far as uh solution partners and, and funding possibility, Bridgeville Borough, Collier Township. SPC, uh, Penn Dot, Chartiers Valley Flood Authority, Railroad. Um, Ajourney Property Owners Utility Providers, Chartiers Valley Shopping Center. Um, funding Commonwealth, Penn Dot, possible, these regional funding requests. Um, lobby elected re- representatives, both municipals, both municipalities. CDBG, I'm not sure what that is, and county gaming grants. Um, possible first steps for a solution, um, joint request. Uh, call your in Bridgeville to Penn Dot Traffic Engineer for partnership to create a draft traffic improvement plan. Maybe some of the design work could be done by Penn Dot. Um, if not, council should consider increases in the entering budget next year to start necessary design work. Start now seeking with the same with Collier Commissioners. Um, future steps, develop formal engineering solutions. Um, plan, even if the plan is extreme such as removing structure in this, in the corridor. Seek grant funding work, municipal, multi municipal, uh, leveraging additional support and consideration. And recommend the project be designed and built in phases so that it is manageable to secure funding and realist, realist, realistic. Action steps. Anticipated value is large, um, potential budget indication, uh, implications are large also. I think this is a, a, a good, um, one of the, a, a good project to, to start maybe. Um, biting our teeth into and, and, um, you know, it's obviously gonna be a long-term. A, a long-term plan, but it's something that, that the Planning Commission could probably move forward with, um, and, and look at. Commissioners?
I mean, I mean, right off the bat, your big partner would be Collier, because you'd be sharing this project with them, and they are. You know, I know that currently they are on board with, uh, addressing this, the, because it's a problem for them, just it is for us. So, they would like to see something happen, um, at that, at the bridge, uh, coming down. From Churchers Valley, or actually from Great Southern all the way down to into Bridgeville, so, um, I mean, there's a, there's, the conversations have already started.
Mike, do you want to talk about the task force Dawn started?
Yeah, sure, uh, one, uh, one of the, I'm sorry?
You're good.
Who's talking?
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, yeah, uh, uh, there one commissioner from Collier, she already contacted me and Joe. Um, and has support, uh, from, from their commissioners to start a conversation, you know, to start working on. Uh, how we, you know, basically how we did it for the south end. And looking at how we worked with Safet to get that project done, they wanted to kind of duplicate that on the north end. Uh, with the bridge project and increasing the capacity of the bridge, uh, to, in figuring out how to, you know. Uh, fix the traffic problem that they have and that we have, uh, one nice thing is we both, we share the same engineering firm, so. Uh, we, we had them come to a meeting, uh, we invited our, we invited our state representative. And had, uh, representative from our state senator at the meetings as well, um, to kind of give us. Hey, you know, where we're at with the meeting, you know, where we're at with the project, what we still need to do, um, you know, we're, it's a long way off. Uh, there still needs to be, you know, we haven't, I don't think we have contacted Penn Dot yet, you know, just like we did with, uh, the south end. You know, we kind of got together with our task force and figured out what we wanted, and then we presented it with, uh, Penn Dot. Um, and then got the ball rolling that way, um, so, you know, we're in the initial stages, um, but we're, you know, it's, uh. The, the ball is rolling and there is cooperation there, which is a nice thing.
Good.
This is, this is Bill, um, couple roadblocks, uh, and, and Mike's right, the Collier Commissioners are on board. There's a, there's a reduction in funding for projects like this, and, and both the senator and the. Uh, representative warned us of that, so to get more attention from Penn Dot, we've got to make it a bigger. Uh, regional type of issue, and that's where the time comes into play, you, you tying Tom's run into it, you know, not just. Coming down Kmart Hills off Call or Presley Road, they, they said you have a better chance. If you can make it a much larger issue and, and make it a regional thing, so. Uh, again, Mike's right, uh, you know, we share a, an engineer and that's great, I think getting both of them talking. Uh, or, you know, both communities talking through. Uh, uh, you know, both communities talking through their engineer. The question I, do you guys from a planning commission, do you guys interact or, or communicate with, say, Collier's planning commission and all? Have you heard anything about their plans down there?
Haven't, haven't had any interaction with them.
Okay.
May, maybe that's something we can start.
Um, yeah, you know, again, as Mike said, you know, there's an, there's a general interest, I think, from, uh, from both commissioners o- over there and the council here. Uh, and obviously you guys are, are looking at it. If we could get everybody on the same page there and, and maybe push the envelope with the Senator and the Commissioner. Or, uh, the representative, uh, maybe we could force her hand a little bit to, to try to find some Michael.
I, I know that.
Go ahead, Joe.
I know that one of the concerns Collier has is obviously you got these big shopping centers. And that drives some of their income that comes into their budgets. And, you know, they want to have these places, uh, for people to want to go to the, the shopping. And, you know, sometimes that hill is, is the hill that people try to stay away from near Bob Evans, all the way down to the Chamber Building. So, uh, that's, I know Dawn personally, and that's kind of how she and I were just talking. We saw each other one day and we just started talking about it. And this was last year sometime. That's when we, uh, um, sat down with Mike and, and, uh, the last meeting I think we had with the, uh, representatives, uh, that's when Bill, I was involved too. It, it's a long, long-term project, but it, it's, it's good that you're at least having some conversations about.
Well, yeah, and it's, it's one of those things. Yeah, it's going to be a long-term project, but it's, it's, you know, now's the time to be starting to think about, well, ten years ago was the time to start thinking about it, but it, it's time to, you know, um, take a look at it and, and maybe push it along a little bit. At least get it on the, get it on the vision of the, the planning commission and the council.
Well, and, and not to belabor, but you start talking about maybe their planning commission too. Somehow they were able to get the, uh, the conception of uh, a sheets and a, uh, another wedding facility that's going up there and, and tying in the, um, you know, the reorganizing of, of, of anadium onto the seventy-nine. That's all going on and, and really only going to increase traffic coming into that area. So somehow in the middle, you know, we got to get connected there.
Yeah. Okay. Planning Commissioners, anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay, um, we're running short on time here. Um, I, I want to open it up, have time to open it up to, for public comment. Tim, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll save yours for next month.
Yep.
Um, let's see, Pat, you were on first, you got?
Sure. Um, regarding parking, uh, there is permit parking presently in Bridgeville. The Parking Authority administers it, uh. Uh, they administer permits for both on-street parking and permit parking in the parking lot. Um, so it is, uh, it is being done. Um, as far as parking to take the bus, you know, that, that issue goes back thirty years, thirty, forty years. Um, and it's sort of a, it, it's sort of there, but recently and I, I just don't, I don't find a whole lot of people coming to either council meetings or planning or parking authority regarding people that are parking to take the bus. It might exist, but I'd like to find an actual complaint. Um, historically it's been there, but with the parking rides that have been developed and with South Hills Village and the T. Uh, I think that that has decreased the amount of the number of people that are parking and taking the bus. Uh, the larger issue I would submit to you is the expansion of parking. Um, and that is where I would hope that the planning commission would find a place, especially in the north end of Washington Avenue to expand parking. The Parking Authority administers parking. They have a search committee, Laura Dekel heads it. It has not been, it has not been able to find a spot for parking in Bridgeville for several years. Um, and, uh, you know, I think the planning commission could help by saying, you really want to go and put parking here. Because that will allow the community around that area to thrive. You talk to, uh, you look at Joe Cower's plans or representation on the north end, you look at a partnership with Collier Township, that all ties into the north end. Um, and, uh, you know, I would point out that one of the first steps is taking that, uh, that engineer and perhaps splitting the bill to update the, uh, the traffic, uh, plan that Mike Haberman at Gateway prepared. You know, many years ago, which is a good foundation to, that the Borough may start with, um, in a partnership with Collier and, uh, maybe split the cost of updating that. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. You know, and, and we will, um, we will certainly be busy this again and, and fine tuning it. You know, as, as we go along. So.
All right.
Okay, um, Bob?
Yes, hi, hi, everybody. Uh, excuse me, I'm, uh, I was, excuse me, uh, can every, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Bob.
Yeah. Okay. I was happy to hear that a couple of you guys brought up the point that, um, only by developing a comprehensive traffic, uh, road plan or network in the community, in Bridgeville that will be beneficial to a larger area, to the community of South Fed, uh, uh, Collier and Upper St. Clair, that's the key to everything. And I want, want to mention that, uh, I know you're interested in solving the traffic, but the solution to the traffic problem is, is, has been saw, has been identified as far back as twenty years ago by six different city planners. But, but at any rate, the primary reason is to, to, Bridgeville's business districts have to be made as easy to get to as the business districts and the competitive communities around us. And that can be done. I might mention one other thing of importance. Um, the, one of the main roadblocks that I'm sure many of you have heard from Penn Dot and repeated by the public officials in our three or four communities is the, uh, uh, railroad bridge, uh, over top of Washington Pike. I think it's the Bridgeville Wheeling, uh, Lake Erie Railroad. To make a long story short, uh, the past, the couple of weeks I designed a plan that I sent to them today on how the bridges does not have to be replaced, but it can be extended. But, uh, I talked to a couple of traffic engineers the past week about the design. They think it's a good idea. But, uh, one of the engineers mentioned that one of the ways to get the, uh, railroad company officials to be more reasonable is through the Public Utilities Commission. I never heard about that approach before. At any rate, he emphasized that the Bridgeville, uh, officials, we have to have a fixed comprehensive plan that shows it's a major, uh, 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 road network that will help all the four communities in the area before you even approach major federal, state and county funding, funders and, and get the help of the Public Utility Commission. And, uh, uh, prior, the, uh, the, the key thing is increasing commercial tax revenue into the community to relieve the people of the tax burden that they're under. But more importantly, the costs, municipal costs are going to rise every year more rapidly than they, they have been. And we need greater income from our two business districts, uh, to keep up with that. And I, uh, one other thing I might mention to you, in terms of the park, parking problem, uh, you, you with the Parking Authority said that there is no problem, or maybe I misunderstood what one of you mentioned. Um, the, you have to remember that fifty percent of the people that uh, uh, live within, let's say a five mile radius of Bridgeville, they don't drive to the Bridgeville South Fed, Collier Business Districts anymore because of the traffic. But as, as a result, when you're trying to estimate, uh, the amount of parking spaces you need, that comes into consideration. And the way that I've always watched some of the experts determine the amount of parking a community needs is they measure the floor space of, um, the, the commercial floor space, the office floor space and the residential floor space. And I guess there's some sort of formula that describes how many parking spaces per each of those three categories are needed. That's the way to do it. But at any rate, everything, it seems to me that the information I've been receiving, everything comes down to a very aggressive uh, uh, development of a comprehensive plan that solves the traffic congestion problem, doesn't uh, make it a little bit less and it solves the parking problem. If we do those two things, uh, I think Bridgeville could become a very, uh, wealthy community. And, uh, anyway, that's the advice that, uh, I'm just passing along to you guys. Uh, okay? Yeah, thanks, thanks for your time. See ya.
Thank you, Bob. And again, um, you know, these, what we've been doing last meeting, this meeting and, and we'll finish the next meeting is basically just some preliminary discussions about topics and, and trying to put some things together for, for the future of, of the planning commission, trying to give us some, a, a roadmap, if you will, of, of projects to start thinking about and start planning. So, Tim, you got anything to add?
Um, no, other than if you guys can follow suit with what we did last meeting and send me, um, your thoughts with respect to scoring for the one, two, three, four issues we went through tonight. That would be awesome. And I'll keep the updated version on this side.
Okay. Cheryl, you got anything to add?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. I take a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
Tim? Made the motion. Who made the second?
I'll second.
Justine. Okay, all in favor, say aye.